Good evening. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on January 17, 2025 to the Holmwood Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 75th Street, New Brunswick. Who am I, Secretary?
Ms. Alvarez. Ms. Calvo.
Here.
Ms. Jackress.
Here.
Ms. Ortiz. Mr. Villia.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Here.
Ms. Verella.
Here.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Adorno.
Here.
We have a call.
Please stand with the flag, Dr. Johnson.
My pleasure. The United States of America has been proud of its citizens. I would like to thank you for your dedication. I would like to thank you for your commitment to our students. I would like to thank you for your dedication. First, by Dr. Johnson, a recognition of Michael Regan.
Good evening. In 2019, we launched the PTEC program here in New Brunswick. The PTEC program is an innovative program that allows students to earn both a high school diploma and associate's degree in a STEM field for Middlesex College at no cost to families. But through the model, it also included an essential industry partner. What makes this model truly ambitious is the industry business partner who works to provide students with real-world experiences from mentorships and work site visits to internship. I must pause today and say from the bottom of my heart that none of this could have been possible without the dedication of our industry partner, CGI, and the leadership of Mr. Regan. And we are proud to recognize this evening. Mr. Regan's commitment to our students did not just begin with PTEC. I'm not going to say much tonight because we have some speakers that like to speak on some of the bullet points that I had to speak on today, but I'm not going to say much, I'm going to let them speak on them. But I just want you to know that his partnership in New Brunswick was a quiet, subtle partnership. It wasn't until I found out that he was actually working with the students at Woodrow Wilson way before 2019. And his work there was doing STEM summer camps or STEM camps during the school year as well, where he provided our students opportunities in the STEM field and provided a lot of resources and provided lunch to our staff and students just to keep our students engaged in the STEM field. So he actually started this work at a grassroots level from his heart, but understanding the importance of our students being in the field of STEM. I just want to say that, Mr. Regan, your leadership and your partnership have helped turn our PTEC vision from a vision to a reality. On behalf of the students, on behalf of the families, teachers, administrators, and the Board of Education, we say thank you. Because of their support and CGI's investment, our students are just dreamers, they're achievers now. Thank you so much. And I'd like to ask our principal from PTEC, Ms. Negan Adamas, to come up and say some words.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Negan Adamas, and I'm the principal of New Brunswick PTEC. As you know, New Brunswick PTEC is a unique high school where students are simultaneously working on both their high school diploma and an associate's degree in mechanical, electrical, or civil engineering technology for Middlesex College. One of the features that differentiates New Brunswick PTEC from other early college high schools is our connection to industry partners. New Brunswick PTEC partners with organizations including Middlesex College, CGI, and Jingoli to help us achieve our goals. Mike Regan, who we're honoring tonight, is a vice president of CGI and has been a steadfast supporter of New Brunswick PTEC in so many large and small ways. Mike has come to speak to our students many times to talk to them about job opportunities available at CGI and has explained the value of a degree in engineering. He has welcomed our cohorts of students to the CGI office for job shadowing and workplace learning experiences, starting with cohort one five years ago and continuing to cohort five this year. He has allocated a significant amount of staff time to mentoring our students and has supported new initiatives such as the App Development Challenge, a project that is now a standard part of our Principles of Engineering course which all PTEC students take in tenth grade. Once PTEC students turn 18, they are invited to apply to CGI's competitive internship program, which draws engineering students from prestigious colleges across the country. We have had five students participate in this internship so far, and three more will be starting their internships with CGI in two weeks. Perhaps most importantly, Mike worked with his company to change the hiring requirements for entry-level positions to include individuals who have earned an associate's degree in engineering technology. Alejandro Colmanero and Israel Valentine, who are here with me tonight, are PTEC cohort two students who each graduated with high honors from Middlesex College last Tuesday with associate's degrees in electrical engineering technology. full-time with CGI this June, even as they continue their studies at NJIT in September to finish their bachelor's degrees. Mike Regan has been a partner who not only pledges support, but also activates resources across his organization to turn that pledge into tangible action that is changing the lives of PTEC students. Mike, can you come up here? You can just stand right there. We are deeply grateful to you for your dedication to our shared mission. We extend our most heartfelt thanks not only for everything you've done for our past and present students, but everything you have put in place for all the future cohorts. And Alejandro and Israel would like to offer you a little word of thanks and some tokens of our appreciation. I'll let Israel go first.
I'd like to take the time to thank you, Mr. Regan, for the wonderful opportunities that you have provided for not only me and Alejandro, but the rest of the PTEC students. This is a small gift created by our current ninth graders in our Engineering course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd also like to take the time just to thank you, Mike Regan, for everything you've done for us, opportunities you were able to give us, and the ability to give us a chance to start at your company this upcoming June. Here, I present to you a prize. I just want to say thank you for all the opportunities you've given not only me, but the student, the upcoming cohorts as well, and your legacy will live on through the opportunities you've created.
Well, thank you. Dr. Johnson, thank you very much. This has been a great partnership between CGI and New Brunswick, but more importantly, to me, our friendship that has grown over the last couple of years. I say this about PTEC, I do a lot of college hiring, four-year degrees, Rowan, Rutgers, NJIT. When I get to PTEC students in the ninth grade, we put them through the same program we put those new college hires through. It takes about nine months for a student from Rutgers to learn the CGI way. The PTEC students learn in bite-sized chunks in shadowing, internships, so when they join CGI, when these two gentlemen join us next month, they will hit the ground running. If they know CGI, they are better prepared than the students coming out of Rowan, Rutgers, NJIT when it comes to knowing the CGI way. So, Negan, thank you to you and yourself. Your students are prepared, we love hiring your students, and that will continue for many years to come. So, thank you.
"In recognition of Michael Regan, with heartfelt appreciation for your outstanding partnership and unwavering support of the New Brunswick PTEC program. Your dedication, mentorship, and commitment to student success have made a lasting impact on our scholars and exemplify the power of industry-education collaboration. Presented by the New Brunswick Board of Education on May 20, 2025."
Mr. Regan, just one final words. First off, I want to congratulate on your retirement, but I know the work is not going to stop. You did speak on our friendship, and just to answer some of that, you know, it's not just about partnership, it's not about two entities that are isolated, right? And we just do the work. In order for this to work, you have to have a friendship. And I'm just going to share with you, I truly appreciate your text messages to me that share with me, hey, Dr. Johnson, we got to work on soft skills, hey, Dr. Johnson, your team did good today, hey, Dr. Johnson, come to my facility and use my robotics lab, we have your meeting here. Those little things shows a friendship because we have a common denominator, we want to
The next presentation we have is the Seal of by Literacy Recognition by Mrs. Virginia
do what's best for kids.
Hills Blago, I'm Laura Hill, and Dr. Andrea Fontanaz.
And this should be a model that many school districts follow, where we connect schools
Thank you. I'll jump in from the slot as hell who cannot make it tonight.
with our industries in order to make the seamless pipeline.
We have a packed house tonight, as you can see, and I'm proud to recognize the 109 New
So again, thank you for your friendship and looking forward to continue to work with you even in your retirement.
Brunswick High School seniors who have earned the New Jersey Seal of by Literacy and award honoring students who have achieved proficiency in English and at least one other language. This is more than an academic milestone, it's a reflection of hard work, cultural pride, and readiness to thrive in a diverse global society. The 109 students recognized today are leaving the high school with a valuable skill set that will benefit them in college, career, and beyond. I want to congratulate each of you, I believe there's about 66 of you that have made it tonight, but I do want to congratulate all 109 students on your incredible achievement. At this time, I invite Dr. Fontanaz, the Director of by NGL and ESS, to present our 2025 Seal of by Literacy recipients. As names are called, myself, Board President, Mr. Ivan Adano, and we will actually provide the recipients with their honor courts at the center. Thank you.
Good evening. Board of Education members, school administrators, parents, students, and staff. We're here tonight to recognize and congratulate our New Brunswick students of the graduating class of 2025 who have earned the New Jersey State Seal of by Literacy. The New Jersey Seal of by Literacy provides recognition to our high school seniors who are able to demonstrate a high level of proficiency in one or more languages in addition to English. Since 2016-2017 school year, we have been able to implement the New Jersey State Seal of by Literacy program in all of our high schools. Today, including our 109 high school seniors who are here tonight, we have successfully awarded a total of 838 students with the New Jersey State Seal of by Literacy for passing the approved assessment in English and in another language. Buenas noches, miembros de la junta de educación, directivos, padres, estudiantes, y personal docente. Estamos aquí esta noche para reconocer y felicitar a nuestros estudiantes de la escuela secundaria de New Brunswick que se van a graduar de la clase 2025 y que han obtenido el sello estatal de lectura y alfabetización bilingüe de Nueva Jersey. El sello de lectoescritura bilingüe brinda reconocimiento a los estudiantes de último año de la secundaria que pueden demostrar un alto nivel de competencia en uno o más idiomas además del inglés. Desde el 2016-2017 hemos podido implementar el programa Sello de Alfabetización Bilingüe del Estado de Nueva Jersey en todas nuestras escuelas secundarias. Hasta la fecha, incluidos nuestros 109 estudiantes de último año de secundaria que están aquí esta noche, hemos otorgado por éxito un total de 838 estudiantes con el sello de alfabetización por aprobar la evaluación aprobada en inglés y en otro idioma. The New Jersey Seal of by Literacy includes a certificate prepared by the New Jersey Department of Education and an appropriate insignia affixed to the student's high school transcript. This seal provides evidence of linguistic skills that are appealing to future employers and college admissions offices. El sello de alfabetización bilingüe de New Jersey incluye un certificado preparado por el Departamento de Educación de New Jersey y una insignia adherida a la libreta de calificaciones del estudiante. Este sello proporciona evidencia de habilidades lingüísticas que son atractivas para futuros empleadores y oficinas de admisión universitarias. Tonight, we will award our senior students with the Seal of by Literacy Honor Court, which they will wear at their graduation ceremony. As our students wear their well-deserved blue and gold Honor Courts, we should be reminded of our district vision: to prepare, empower, and inspire lifelong learners and leaders. As blue represents our school district and gold represents success and empowerment. Esta noche premiaremos a nuestros estudiantes de último año con el cordón de honor del sello de lectoescritura bilingüe que usarán en la ceremonia de graduación. Mientras nuestros alumnos visten sus bien merecidos cordones de honor de color azul y dorado, debemos recordar nuestra visión del distrito: preparar, capacitar, e inspirar a los estudiantes y líderes para toda la vida, ya que el azul representa nuestro distrito escolar y el oro representa el éxito y la capacitación académica. Finally, I would like to emphasize that the New Brunswick Public Schools District remains deeply committed to supporting the development of both our students' first and second languages. Today, we are proud to recognize and celebrate these exceptional students for their outstanding achievements. Finalmente quisiera enfatizar que el distrito escolar público de New Brunswick mantiene su firme compromiso con el desarrollo del primer y segundo idioma de nuestros estudiantes. Hoy nos enorgullece reconocer y celebrar a estos excepcionales estudiantes por sus logros sobresalientes. At this time, we invite each student to come forward to the stage as their name is called to receive their New Jersey State Seal of by Literacy Honor Court. The courts will be presented by Superintendent Dr. Johnson and Board President Mr. Ivan Adorno. Students will remain on stage briefly for a group photo. En este momento invitamos a cada estudiante a pasar al escenario mientras se le llama para recibir su cordón de honor de sello de lectoescritura bilingüe del Estado de Nueva Jersey. Los cordones serán entregados por el Superintendent Dr. Johnson y el Presidente de la Junta de Educación, señor Ivan Adorno. Los estudiantes permanecerán brevemente en el escenario para una foto grupal. Following the presentation, certificates will be available for pickup outside the auditorium. Congratulations to all 109 students. You have shown that hard work and dedication truly lead to success. Please join me in celebrating each of these accomplished students as I call them to the stage. Después de la presentación, los certificados estarán disponibles para recoger afuera del auditorio. Felicitaciones a los 109 estudiantes. Han demostrado que el trabajo duro y la dedicación realmente conducen al éxito. Los envío a unirse a mí para celebrar a cada uno de estos estudiantes destacados mientras los llamo al escenario. Anna Ángel Pérez, Emily Asunción González, Karen Bernardino José, Melissa Betancourt, Maylin Bravo Martínez, Freya Brena Gallegos, Lizbeth Cava Díaz, Alin Cabrera Anduja, Shelby Camarillo González, Anthony Cardona Orinón, Julio Carranza, Ángel Castro Jiménez, Michelle Sisnero Pedalta, Carlos Colón Vázquez, Jessica Cruz Ponez, Arielys Cruz Padilla, Emily Cruz Meninge, Starling Dylan Díaz, Merle Escobar Morales, Yariel Estrada Vázquez, Inez Garaj, Jennifer García, Sherlil García Osorio, Ashley García Torres, Daisy García Vázquez, James González Olivera, Lizbeth González Rosas, Marianela Ranha Castillo, Dulce Dutier López, Saraí Guzmán Cuevas, Anaceli Guzmán González, Alex Hernández, Juliana Hernández Fernández, Madeline Hernández Mujía, Loani Hernández Muñoz, Yasin Hernández Ruiz, Michelle Hernández Sánchez, Karen Herrera Leal, Genesis Juárez García, Kimberly Jiménez Castro, Oyuki Jiménez Mayos, Rosanelle José Ramos, Luisa Juárez Vázquez, Seili Lainez Benítez, Marilina Lara, Brian Leal Rivera, Emmanuel Limón, Emily López, Kevin López Ilario, Roxana López Martínez, Nancy López Rafael, Joanna López Victorero, Victor, Yasli Ruiz, Rosdali Marís Carranza, Yasmin Martínez Cruz, Yani Martínez Chanes, Dariana Martínez López, Kimberly Martínez López, Dariana Martínez López, Juzbeiri Matheo Antuna, Sherlil Mejía Rodríguez, Ashley Melendez Mendri, Shailin Melgar Castillo, Alba Meliánez Alejandro, Henry Mendoza Gómez, Angela Miranda Calidnonio, Jesús Morán Vázquez, Carla Murcia, Stigert Ortiz Aguirre, Lizbeth Parez Espeles, Roselín Pérez Gómez, Natalie Pérez Guzmán, Eury Pérez Recio, Michelle Ponsevillón, José Puerto Hernández, Alexa Puga, Sabrina Ramírez Juárez, Joel Ignacio Ramos de León, Ailir Resendiz, Miguel Estrefo Correa, Yostín Reynoso Maldonado, Wiclo Rodríguez Diembrus, Bécia Rodríguez Ramírez, Yolain Rodríguez Alazal, Aílla Rodríguez Vargas, Alexa Rojas, Giovani Doas Vidal, Cecilia Romero Torres, Ashley Estadio Marzec, Alina Sánchez, Kirstie Sánchez Marquista, Romé L Sánchez Gómez, Denil Sánchez López, Yani Santiago Cruz, Johnny Santos Quintero, Brenda Torres Juárez, Franklin Torres Pérez, Diagini Valdez Valdez, Cristal Valentin García, Iraiz Valentin González, Aaron Pereira León, Randy Vázquez Betancourt, Catherine Velázquez Mejía, Alejandra Velázquez Sánchez, Evelyn Pérez Quintero, Adriana Victoriano, Candy Siviera, y Karen Villanueva Juárez. Congratulations to all the 109 students. Ortiz Aguirre, Lizbeth Rípeares Espérez, Roselín Pérez Gómez, Natalie Pérez Guzmán, Eury Pérez Recio, Michelle Ponsevillón, José Puerto Hernández, Alexa Puga, Sabrina Ramírez Juárez, Joel Ignacio Ramos de León, Ailir Resendiz, Miguel Estrefo Correa, Yostí Reynoso Maldonado, Wiclo Rodríguez Diabulís, Bécia Rodríguez Ramírez, Yolaino Rodríguez Alazal, Aílla Rodríguez Vargas, Alexa Rojas, Giovani Doas Vidal, Cecilia Romero Torres, Ashley Estadio Marzic, Alina Sánchez, Kirstie Sánchez Marquista, Romé L. Sánchez Gómez, Denise Sánchez Núñez López, Yanira Santiago Cruz, Johnny Santos Quintero, Brenda Torres Juárez, Franklin Torres Pérez, Diagini Valdés Valdés, Cristal Valentin García, Iraíz Valentin González, Aaron Pereira León, Randy Vázquez Betancourt, Catherine Velázquez Mejía, Alejandra Velázquez Sánchez, Evelyn Pérez Quintero, Adriana Victoriano, Candy Siviera, y Karen Villanueva Juárez. and I like everyone for our students. It's always my favorite part of meeting. Moving on to item number four, I need a motion for the minute of the April 29th, of April 29th, 2025, Monday meeting and the May 6th, 2025 reorganization meeting. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla. Noted. Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mrs. Medina Hernández, Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number five, super tennis report, Dr. Johnson.
Yes, as of May 2025, we enrolled 8,816 students. We had three cases of harassment and intimidation in Birmingham. Our suspensions were 192. Our staff attendance was 95% and our student attendance at 92%. For the month of May, we began by celebrating Principal Appreciation Day on May 1st and Teacher Appreciation Week from May 5th to May 9th. These special observances provide a meaningful opportunity to reflect on the dedication, care, and commitment of our principals and teachers. Through their passion and creativity, they inspire and empower students every day to reach their full potential. And from the bottom of my heart, we say thank you and we appreciate you. I'd like to share that I'm very excited that I was able to attend our PTech graduation at Middlesex, really Middlesex graduation, which our PTech students were part of. And this happened on Tuesday, May 13th, and it was just great to be there to watch our students walk across the stage to receive their Associate's Degree in Engineering, all while still being enrolled in the high school. And you saw a little bit of it just a few minutes ago when we actually honored Mr. Regan and his support. But between education and industry is Middlesex College, and Middlesex College is also a partner, which provides the education for our students to receive their Associate's Degree. So it was an honor actually to be part of it and I'll actually just recognize the two students by name that actually earned their Associate's Degree. Israel Valentin, Alejandro Colmerero, Jacenia Magana, Wesley Alvarez Mejía, Alexander Azuna, Norberto Torres III, Diana Fong, Enciso Catán, Adam Rosario, Christopher Herrera, Juan Carlos López, Nalasco, Arturo Rodriguez Cudínez, Adriel Tejada García. And just want to say that their accomplishments is a powerful testament to the hard work, perseverance, and passion for learning. Even more exciting is that 10 of those students have been accepted to NJIT for the 25-25 school year, continuing their academic journey in engineering and technology, and for that we are proud of them. I'm also proud to highlight some of the remarkable achievements from our New Brunswick High School seniors. One student has earned a full academic scholarship to Colgar University, and another has been awarded a full academic scholarship to the University of Pennsylvania, which is an Ivy League school. Additionally, members of the class of 2025 already received letters of acceptance from some of the nation's most prestigious universities, including Clemson University, Duke University, John Hopkins University, the University of Massachusetts, the College of New Jersey, Ohio State University, Penn State University, Rutgers University, Temple University, Drexel University, Harvard University, Manhattan College, Michigan State University, the University of North Carolina, Old Dominion University, Purdue University, Seton Hall University, the University of Virginia, and I could go on and on, but that's just to name a few. These accomplishments are a testament to the talent, dedication, and resilience of our students and our staff, and the support they have received from their families, their guidance counselors, and the school community. And for that, we say thank you. Tomorrow, May 21st, we will be celebrating the service of three exceptional board members for their service by the Middlesex County School Board Association. These board members are Diana Jacquez, Patricia Varela, and our former Board of Education member, Dr. Dale Caldwell. Each of them has made a lasting impact on the New Brunswick Board of Education, and most importantly, on the lives of our students. We thank them for their years of dedication, service, and leadership. And lastly, we are looking ahead and we are excited for our upcoming all-in for New Brunswick Community Fair, which will take place on Saturday, May 31st, at Red Shaw School. This event brings together families, community partners, and district staff to celebrate our shared commitment to students, success, and well-being. We invite everyone to join us for a day of connection, fun, and community pride. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Can I get a motion to over this super tennis report? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mrs. Medina Hernández, Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to item six, Student Representative Report, Ms. Emily Cruz Mendiha.
Good evening. In New Brunswick High School, the boys' varsity had a senior night on May 1st. Our seniors took a trip to Six Flags on May 9th. Teacher Appreciation Week was May 5th through May 9th, where the student council organized something special for the teachers each day. Our last Spear Week was also on the same week, and we're all throughout the teachers so they can feel included and appreciated. The talent show, Zebra Got Talent, was held on May 15th, where Willia Pericio and Anna Bodogam won first place. Our senior program will be this Friday on May 23rd, and it's safe to say most of the seniors are excited to go. In New Brunswick Health Science and Energy High School, they celebrated Decision Day with their senior class on May 1st by encouraging them to wear their school apparel slash school colors. Seniors also participated in different Decision Day activities, such as signing as a school pendant, Decision Day bingo, and writing legacy letters to rising seniors or memorable teacher. Pete the Pick-up paid a visit to HST on May 6th to congratulate the 13 seniors attending St. Peter's University. On May 16th, HST's juniors class visited St. Peter's University for a college tour. Today, HST's health career collaborative cohort presented their product service announcement to Rutgers Medical School staff and administrations. Our senior class will be going on their senior trip to Washington DC on May 30th. PTech students who graduated from middle school last week presented their capstone engineering projects to family, friends, and members of the Middlesex College Engineering Technology Industrial Advisory Board. Projects included a model suspension bridge, a sound amplifier, and a mobile hydrocoated garden. Everyone was impressed with the students' creativity in their creations and points in their presentations. PTech will be co-hosting a STEM night with Livingston School on Thursday, May 22nd, to promote interest in STEM fields, including engineering. Today, PTech had an incredible guest speaker from the Minding Your Mind program talk to students about its journey from anxiety and depression to mental health in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month. This concludes the Student Representative Report.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, Facilities Committee Report, Ms. Jacenia Medina Hernández, Chairwoman.
Thank you. The Facilities Committee meeting was held on May 14th at 5:00 p.m. We discussed some minor changes to our use of school facilities policy and accompanying regulations. In addition, we also reviewed the proposed 2025-2026 Facilities Committee Meeting calendar. We ended our meeting with a status update on our scheduled summer school facilities projects. The biggest by far of the projects is the full HVAC replacement on a pathways campus, which remains on target to start immediately after the last day of school. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Item number eight, Athletic Committee Report, Ms. Ashley Call.
Good evening. The postseason has officially begun for all sports. Track and field started off with the Greater Middlesex Conference Championship, where many athletes earned top-six places in multiple events. Last weekend, they also competed in the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Tournament, where ASEAN Headley placed in discus and will move on to Group Four State Group Tournament on May 30th. Girls' five football earned a spot in the state tournament for the second year in a row and will face off against Union High School this Thursday in the first round. Esports also competed in the state tournament but fell in the first round. Softball earned a win in their first round of the county playoffs but fell to the number one seed in the second round in a hard-fought game. Finally, baseball, who is having the best season in recent memory since the 13-win team in 2011. Our baseball team is currently 14-2 on the season and will play in the GMC Invitational Finals versus East Brunswick Magnet High School. Both New Brunswick and East Brunswick Magnet are co-division champions this year and will play Friday at a neutral site in Edison High School. The baseball team is also currently the number five seed in the state tournament and will host a first-round playoff game at New Brunswick High School next Tuesday on May 27th. We would also like to congratulate Charlene Yoella Cabral from Health Science High School, who participated in cheerleading, winter track, spring track, and flag football this year, and earned the NJSIAA Scholar Athlete Award this weekend. Emily López and Edwin Sidio will receive the Middlesex County Scholar Athletes Award. The spring season will conclude with the spring banquet in two weeks. May I have a motion to approve the reconciliation report, please?
Second.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mrs. Medina Hernández, Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number nine, Curriculum Policy Committee Report, Ms. Diana Jacquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Policy Committee met last week, May 13th. We covered the presentation from GEAR Up program that was presented by Brian Caniades, gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs. That's what GEAR Up stands for. The NJ GEAR Up State Project seeks to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education by providing them with the tools for academic success. This is a federal grant administered through the NJ Office of the Secretary for Higher Education, OSHE. The project works with students, families, and teachers of 81 schools in 12 urban centers around New Jersey. Rutgers University was chosen to partner with New Brunswick Public Schools for the remainder of this grant. The resolutions that were discussed are all on the consent agenda. The policies that were in effect include my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item number 10, Student Support Services Committee, Ms. Jennifer Sevilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Student Support Services Committee met on May 12th, 2025, and we would like to take a moment to highlight the following. Mental Health Awareness Month has been recognized each May for over 75 years now. To the pioneering efforts of mental health America, this month served as a vital opportunity to raise awareness, share resources, provide education, and advocate for mental health and the well-being of all individuals. The theme for 2025 Training Awareness Interaction calls on individuals and communities to move beyond awareness and take meaningful steps to support those affected by mental health challenges. It exercises the importance of fostering a culture of care, inclusivity, and proactive support across all areas of society. Before meaningful action can be taken, it's essential to build a strong foundation of mental health needs. This involves developing the knowledge and understanding necessary to recognize, manage, and prevent mental health conditions. Mental health literacy involves awareness of symptoms, risk factors, and available resources, and empowering individuals not only to seek help for themselves but also to support others in navigating the mental health journey and making sure we are empowered to receive those services. We also have Special Education Week, which is observed from May 11th to the 17th, which celebrates the commitment, resilience, and progress of special education committees. This year's theme, Planting the Seed of Education, symbolizes the nurturing and growth that takes place with students when diverse learning needs are supported through care, patience, and high-quality instruction. This week served as a time to recognize and honor the vital contributions of everyone involved in supporting students with diverse abilities, including the students themselves, their families, teachers, therapists, paraprofessionals, and school administrators. Their dedication plays an essential role in cultivating inclusive learning environments where all students can thrive. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to all who serve and advocate for students with diverse abilities, and we reaffirm our commitment to fostering equitable educational opportunities for everyone. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, we can open up to public comments. Madam Secretary, do you have anyone signed up for comments?
Yes, Mr. President, we have three sign-ups for this evening, beginning with Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Please come up to the mic, state your name and your address.
Good evening, Charlie Cradaville, who wants to stay on Street here in New Brunswick. Start out with a question on resolution U. This is purchasing a property at 135 New Avenue. Can you tell me, is this the only land that's needed for the project, or you need to acquire additional properties?
Nope, this will be all.
Okay. And was there an appraisal done on the property?
Yeah, we did an appraisal. We, there were three lots there about 15 years ago. We wanted to purchase all three, but there was an elderly woman residing in that house we're now going to acquire. We need it for parking. She was asked, so now we made an offer consistent with our appraisal, and the owner has accepted that if the board approves it, the state has to approve it, and then we'll buy it. It's going to be a parking lot.
Okay. Do you know the condition of the home? Is it in good shape?
Deplorable. It's a tear down.
All right. Moving to resolution Y. There's a contract with the Lawrence Goldman Spitzer Law Firm. Can they, can you tell me how much per hour?
Three hundred an hour is their rate quoted by John Hopkin, who's, I think, the senior partner of Lawrence Goldman and Spitzer. He's our guru on roof panels. He did the initial contract reviews some 15 or 17 years ago. They're now running out, and he's going to guide the board through the process of how we keep the panels, or do we renegotiate another service provider? So we're seeking his counsel and advice, and that's why he's retained his special counsel.
Okay, I see the very next resolution, you're hiring a different law firm. The- The, that one has not to exceed an amount of 15,000. Is there a not-to-exceed associated with the Lawrence?
No, that's a deductible on an insurance claim. It really usually is not handled that way. In other words, that meth house on Werble is an insurance defense law firm for claims, and if, at least in the past, in my experience, it's been part of the deductible is, can be, and is paid towards attorney's fees. And that's what that is, a portion of the attorney's fees. It'll probably be much larger than that.
Okay. I guess my question was, why no, why no not to exceed an amount for the Lawrence firm for this contract? Is it truly unlimited? They could bill as much as they want at 300 an hour?
No. As 75,000 is the limit, should be a lot less than that.
7,500, okay. Well, thank you for answering my questions. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please next on the list.
Next up, we have Ms. Linda Stork.
Please come over to the mic, speak your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Stork. I live at 12 Park Boulevard. And I have a question about, well, also about you, because I was wondering if there was a house on your lot now. It seems like a lot for, an empty lot. And the house is condemned already?
Excuse me. No, it's not condemned. There is a house. In fact, before we got the opportunity to bid on it, they had a contract for more than 420,000 or whatever. Somebody was going to fix it up. I guess fortunately for us, it fell through, and now we came in with our bid, and they've accepted it. But the house is there. It's a home. It was in good shape, but now it's not. And that's, that's the dynamics.
All right. I'm also, some thought parking lot, at the menu and ticket, I have to park for work. And I also have a question about A, A, double A and A C. With the nursing contract that went up for the double A, A, it was not to exceed 80,000, and now it's not to exceed 180,000? And that's for this current year. I just was curious what happened there that you want to double?
Dr. Ford.
So the reason for the doubling is of various reasons. One was increasing receiving medically fragile students in the district, so we intend on addressing their needs accordingly, so they could attend school. Also, current students' medical status have shifted, where they now require one-to-one medical services at the school level. And overall, we continue to work collaboratively with new students and families and try our best to honor the requests of families who already have nurses taking care of their children, so that we could ensure that continuity of care.
Okay, but an increased amount of care, that's more money?
Okay. So there are additional students that are in need of medical care, so that would increase our cost because they are in need of one-to-one nurses.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. And back to the suspensions. My most favorite topic, 192, is, I understand what was stated last month, that in the process of, the way I understood it, warbreakers enforcement of the existing rules and making sure students understand that they need to go to class, or there will be consequences. However, I mean, that's just still a really high number of students that are just being suspended out of school.
Thank you for your comments.
Then they really are going to class.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, is there anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, Carlos Ramirez.
Thank you. Please come over to the mic, speak your name and address.
Okay, board members, Carlos Ramirez reported with New Brunswick today. I want to start by congratulating my fellow bilingual members. I just wanted to also bring out a view that I observed today. We were able to continue the meeting without any interruptions. Usually, the board decides to wait for all family members or students that were saying something to leave to continue meetings. That did not happen today, which I kind of like. I think many of the people who come here are on the expectation that it's only their son's presentation, their daughter's presentation, siblings' presentations. So I think it'll be nice to hear the board kind of explain before the presentation starts how the board functions and that this is more than just a presentation, it's a port of education meeting, and also remind parents that there is false biases, electronic biases, that enable for them to listen to these presentations in Spanish as well, if they are not bilingual. I also wanted to ask, is there a resolution my colleague Charlie was asking, or a resolution U? Is there a number of new parking lots we should expect to become available if this deal goes through?
I don't think we've gotten that far with plans or anything yet.
Is there a number of new parking lots that are working at this location?
Minimal.
Minimal.
And we have two schools in that location.
Yeah. If I'm not mistaken, the brand-new school that is right in the center, I forget the name, there's another space more to the, we're looking from Livingston Street, looking across from the school. Now, there's an empty lot on the left side, where there appears to be some stuff established in our house. And there's like a spacer. Is that also a parking lot for staff, or is that a private property?
I'm not sure. I'm getting where you're at, like what location is trying to do.
Yeah. That's a red shop. I think that's private.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Resolution G, on the radio, can you tell me what M D stands for?
You have, Mr. Phil, on the yellow line, you have a, you know what the M D, M D radio means?
That's the name of the vendor that's providing the equipment.
Okay, now, where would he regularly install and who's going to install them? This is a replacement, what is it, to existing ones?
The plan is to install them in our in-district buses.
Okay, now, these are replacements for older models that I guess are in current style?
This is the equipment that we are equipping our buses with.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up?
That's the list, Mr. President. No one else.
Thank you for closing the public comments. Item number 12, President's Report.
May have been a busy month for recognition and celebrations. Principal's Day, Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, which was made from April 4th through the 10th, Teacher Appreciation Week, which was made from April 4th through the 9th, National Nurses Week, which was made from April 6th through the 12th, National Speech Language Hearing Month. It is also Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month. And additionally, we had Special Education Week was made from April 11th through the 17th. I believe as a district that we're doing a good job of highlighting the importance of mental health, and the willingness for everyone, including faculty, staff, and students. There's been a purposeful and intentional anti-stigma campaign in the last few years by our Student Support Services and Human Resources teams. I encourage staff and families to take advantage of the resources available to them through the district and community. Reach out and speak out. I try to, I try to remember that many of us fight daily silent battles. This is why I continue to share the phrase, "Being kind costs nothing. Encouragement costs nothing." To those who struggle, I see you, I understand you, and if you are able to wake up, get dressed, and face the dead, I am proud. To those that are caretakers and look out for others, please provide yourself the same grace and care. It is okay to take a break from being needed, because there are times when you need you. Recently, I participated in a career day at Roosevelt School. During a class visit, one of the third graders asked me, "If 12-year-old you was sitting in front of you right now, what would you say to yourself?" It's a third grader, eight years old. Ooh, my mom. Teacher was proud. Teacher actually got emotional. Got me emotional almost. So this is absolutely, the question absolutely stunned the teacher and myself. I quickly thought of a response for a class of eight-year-olds, and what I came up with is, learn to laugh sooner. Not everything is as serious as you think. And I want to thank that third grader for reminding me to enjoy this ride. I choose, I can choose to laugh if I'm enjoying the work and the task we're doing. We are close to prom season as well. So for our seniors, and those who are participating in prom, enjoy, unlock those core memories, but please get home safe. All right. That concludes my report. We'll move on to item 13, the Consent Agenda. Any motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla. On B? Noted. Thank you. Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela. Ms. Varela? Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, refuse D?
D? Noted. Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Finance Committee Report, Ms. Patricia Varela.
Good evening, everyone. The Finance Committee, I don't know if somebody submitted the Finance Report. Can I please have a motion to accept a May 20, 2025 Finance Report?
So, second.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla, Mr. Spencer. Page six, noted. Ms. Varela, Mrs. Medina Hernandez?
Yes, refuse page 19.
Noted. Mr. Adorno?
Yes, so now we'll go to Madam. So I have to adjust my resolution after the statement I've accused on letter R.
Letter R, noted.
On page six and page five of the final report.
Page five and six, noted.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6, provides that certain matters of a body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as not as fouled. One, personnel matters. Two, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore, be resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by the Board of Education Administrator's staff. And the minutes of this said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-escorted in accordance to with the Public Open Meeting Act no longer exist. I think motion to approve closed session.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Caldwell, Ms. Jacquez, Ms. Ortiz, Ms. Sevilla, Mr. Spencer, Ms. Varela, Mrs. Medina Hernandez, Mr. Adorno.
Yes, we are in closed session.